Can everybody hear me? Yes, just kind of raise your hand if anybody has memorials tonight, moments of silence. Just, just Rita. Okay. Oh, Dave, you have one, right, Mr. Conway? Okay. Are we offhand on anything? Okay, we're waiting for LTC and then we'll get started.
Mr. Mayor, you're on TV, you're also ready to go.
All right, we're on TV, Maron, did they say, okay?
Yeah, Rocky sees it.
Yeah, okay, all right. Start the meeting. June twenty-third, twenty-twenty meeting, we'll do a salute to the flag, if you don't mind. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call.
Councilor Rock.
Here.
Councilor Samaras.
Yeah.
Councilor Chow.
Here.
Councilor Conway.
Here.
Councilor Drinkwater.
Here.
Councilor Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Councilor Mercier.
You're still on mute, counselor, but.
We've got you. Councilor Noon, eight present.
Thank you. Moments of silence, Counselor Mercier.
Yes, can you hear me, Mayor? Okay, thank you. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber to Joanne P. Joan Ryder, widow of the late Charles Ryder who passed before her in nineteen ninety-four. Joan was raised in Lowell where she attended area schools graduating from Lowell High School. Joan was a devoted mother raising her thirteen children. For about eight years she worked as a secretary for several mayors of the city of Lowell. After that she worked in City Hall for some years before her retirement. She is survived by her thirteen children, Brian, Geraldine, Joan, Gary, Roberta, Rosemary, Kim, Trudy, John, Lisa, Carrie, and Christopher, who is president of Firefights Local Eight Fifty-Three, and Eric. She is also survived by her twenty-six grandchildren, her two brothers John Gilbride and Bobby Gilbride. She was also the sister of the late Geraldine. We extend our condolences to her family, relatives, and many friends. She will be truly missed. I knew her well and she was a wonderful person. I would also like to offer a moment of silence in dock and chamber to all those who have passed away since our last council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Conway. You're on mute.
I'm all set, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other moments of silence? I'd just like to offer a moment of silence for Dennis Shaughnessy. He was a writer for the Lowell Sun and the Drakken Dispatch for many years, lived in Drakken. He also drove a truck, drove a cab, worked as a janitor, and he loved being a short-order cook at famous Ray Robinson's sandwich shop, the Lowell Landmark. He never earned a college degree, but he was advisor to the U. Lowell's student newspaper, The Connector. He leaves behind his wife of thirty-one years, Diane, their children Rory, Kathleen, Dennis. He also leaves behind stepchildren Tammy and Jay, who is preceded by a stepson Lee. He is also survived by his sister Denise Markcott. Dennis was also deeply fond of Roxy, son of Rory, Siberian Husky. Like to offer the family our condolences and remember Dennis. If we could offer a moment, if we can just bow our heads for a moment. Thank you. Mayor's business. Communication, remote participation pursuant to the Governor Baker's emergency order modifying the state's open meeting law issued March twelfth, twenty-twenty, meetings will be held using remote participation as follows. Members of the public may view the meeting via LTC and those wishing to speak regarding specific agenda item shall register to speak in advance with the clerk's office. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Rock. City clerk portion, need minutes, need a motion to accept and place on file, the minutes to the city council meeting June ninth for acceptance by Counselor Chow, seconded by Counselor Mercier. Communications, before we get into the communications. Motion, okay, get right into communications by city manager. Motion response A, canal cleanup, if you can, it goes to Council Elliot.
Mr. Mayor. If I could just make an announcement quickly before we start about a water main break that happened, just for anybody listening.
Sure.
There was a water main breakout in the industrial avenue area earlier today and the water utility is repairing it right now. They hope to have the repairs done by seven PM, but I do want to mention the areas impacted, which include the Highlands, South Lowell, back Central, and areas off of Forum Street. And I, and what, they're hoping it's done by seven PM, but they may experience water, temporary water discoloration. This is not harmful and we just want people to know if they do notice that condition in those areas, it's temporary, it's not harmful, but they should run their tub on cold water for fifteen to twenty minutes and it will clear up quickly. So, since it's being finished at seven o'clock at night, I just don't want people not to know what they should do if they see the discolored water once they finish this repair. And if you have any questions, you can call the utility at nine-seven-eight-six-seven-four-four-two-four-two for further assistance. It is a large area that was affected. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Elliot, you have any questions?
No questions, thank you for reporting, Madam Manager. This is regarding cleaning the canals. The report indicates that you met with Clean Rivers Project and they'll be cleaning the canals beginning in July with the assistance of the city. So, thank you, thank you for that. They're probably getting ways into the city and first impression, you know, people visiting, they see all this debris in the canals, you know, not a good thing, so.
Thank you, and through you to the council, I know Commissioner Clancy's on and we have been discussing now with the new company, Central Rivers, who bought out Canal. And they are, they appear much more cooperative about working collaboratively with us on trying to clean the debris in the canals. So, we will work with them in terms of what we can do, but they, this didn't happen before with prior owners, so I don't know, Commissioner Clancy has anything to add.
Commissioner Clancy?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Manager Donahue. I just want to elaborate on that response and so as Manager Donahue has said, we will be starting that effort in July and the efforts will really be in the Upper Pottucket. We've also received a lot of complaints of debris in the canals, especially along Suffolk Street, the Western Canal, and that cleanup will, that will also take place in July. It will be a combination of removing floating debris and then we will have a drawdown of the Upper Pottucket Canal when we do the Central Street Bridge project with the Tiger Project that will also allow for some cleanup within that portion of the canal. And also, I think this is also a good time to give the council an update that we have seen a lot, a lot of illegal dumping throughout the city in the canals and also in some of our packed park barrels. And we are coordinating with Waste Management on that effort to make sure that that is cleaned up, but also to work with the inspectional services to see how some of those illegal dumping can be investigated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice office, Christine, and second of all, is there any way we can work with them to do a monthly clean? And is there any way that they can kind of, maybe there's some sort of netting, like fish netting, that we could use to catch the debris and then that could be extracted once a month to catch all the debris unless there are fish in there and that would inhabit that? But it would be nice to get on a regular schedule. I just walked up there to go to Sizzling Kitchen and, you know, it's a mess, so maybe we should try to work with them to get a regular schedule going, you know, April, May, June, July, and September, and then we'll see how it goes into the fall. But we could do something, even if we got some volunteers, however you guys want to work it out, but instead of just letting it build up and build up and then we clean it, it'd be better to have a regular schedule, so I know you got one, sure.
We, we, you know, agree that this has got to be an ongoing situation. I mean, part of the problem is for years, the prior owner wouldn't let any real cleaning go forward.
Right.
Did, they'd interrupt it, and so we're hopeful, we're very hopeful that this is a better partnership and that we can work together so that they, we can regularly clean these. I mean, it's a big job right now because it's been neglected for so many years, but we do want to work with them.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the motion, Counselor Elliot. Second motion by Counselor Chow, cleanup of the dump materials.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Madam Manager, and it was they go for the report, this area of the neighborhood, about three or four streets, that area is often forgotten. And I'm glad that the inspection service went out and acted upon the motion request right away, and I like the statement that you will continue to keep eyes on that area to prevent further dumping and so forth. And all the motion a couple of weeks ago was also look at the, the mess, the abandoned tents and mattresses along the river canal there as well. And I know that's part of the jurisdiction of mass DOT and nothing they can do right now because of COVID-nineteen, but if, Madam Manager, if you, once you make contact with them again, when they are ready to resume with the, you know, any plans for cleanup, cleaning up that area, please keep the council informed. I would appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Chow. I know, you know, the Assistant City Manager has been in contact with Maston, with District Four, though they did say that under COVID-nineteen CDC guidelines, they were not, they were following those not to disturb or relocate homeless camps during the crisis. But we are trying to determine if this one's largely abandoned and in which case they may consider, you know, doing something. So, we are going to continue to communicate with them on that and have an inspection so that we can try and get that cleaned up despite the COVID crisis and the guidelines from the CDC. We'll keep you posted.
Good, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions on that motion? Motion response to install traffic cameras, Counsel Elliot?
Thank you for the response. We did discuss this quite a bit, so thank you for the report and unfortunately it can't be used to write tickets, but that's the way it is. I don't know, Madam Manager, if you have anything else to add.
Anything for us, sure.
I know, I know Chief Richardson's on the Zoom call. I, I think the, as the report states, that you can't use it for writing ticket, but, you know, in terms of using it for traffic control, I don't know if you have anything else to add.
Obviously, some of the cameras we can monitor and hopefully maybe down the road that'll change, we can use them to write tickets and if that's the case, they'll end up in a good position, but like the report says, it is what it is and we are, we are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I mean, really, the intent was, you know, to put these cameras and as we've mentioned at other meetings in Massachusetts, of course, have ruled that, you know, issuing citations from cameras doesn't pass muster, so thank you for the report.
Makes, I mean, we've been enforcing traffic heavily for the city the last couple of months and we talked about that, Traffic Subcommittee next time you have one, we'll have some numbers for you. But I saw, I see traffic slowed down a little bit and people started to respond to the report.
Well, that's good. As I mentioned, the intent of the motion was to place cameras strategically to hopefully write tickets, although we can't in Massachusetts, the courts have ruled, deemed that that's not permissible use. So, thanks for being vigilant, Chief, from the speed, and we'll talk about it in the next subcommittee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Motion response D, Census Response Rate. Counselor Noon is not here, but maybe Christine McCall could just give us a quick overview of the report.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Noon requested the city to address the COVID-nineteen pandemic and our response rate. So, I just put together a report of the work that the Lowell Complete Count Committee has done to date. The Lowell Complete Count Committee is comprised of city staff, nonprofit staff, and other key stakeholders. And we meet on a weekly basis to collaborate and coordinate on how best to turn out self-response. Obviously, Census Day twenty-twenty was April first, which was in the middle of the stay-at-home work. So, it is a little bit of a challenge to reach our hard-to-count communities when we're unable to do physical outreach, but however, we've had a pretty good response to date with all of our virtual activities, our code reds, working directly with the school department, a B.C. Adult Ed Center. I know CBA and CMAA and Lowell Alliance have been, you, sharing census data and information with WhoDrop. We are now engaging with the Spanish radio station to do weekly ads and we have weekly interviews. And then we've also have designed and are working with the wonderful signage to install in key locations throughout the city. And we're going to do a citywide mailer and then a follow-up targeted mailer to the census tracts that continue to have a low self-response rate. And as, you know, restrictions are lifted and things start to reopen, we will continue to work with our partners to get census workers where community members will be to increase our self-response rate. We're about fifty-six percent now. The city, the state of Massachusetts, called about sixty-two percent self-response rate, so we're pretty close to the state response rate. We're doing really well. In twenty-ten, the city's final response rate was only at sixty-two percent, so I think we're on target to have a good response rate this year, this decade. We, because of the pandemic, the Census Bureau extended the self-response rate to the end of October and census workers will start knocking on doors in the summer. So, I think that will also help with our self-response rate. That's just a brief overview. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank, so we're up to about fifty-six percent, you said?
Yes.
All right. What was the other city that we were very close with? Was it Springfield?
Yes, we're just a hair behind Springfield, but Springfield and Lowell for comparable cities where the highest in self-response rate.
All right, and even all the work, so the school department did a lot of work the last couple of weeks and we, do we know if we were able to push ourselves ahead on that or not get the response yet or?
I haven't analyzed the daily data. We did, we do get a, we have an Excel spreadsheet, so we can see census tracts, what the percent increase is for week to week. And aside from four census tracts, which we're not surprised by, there, there has been a percent movement in self-response rate. So, we've plateaued a little bit this week, but we have some things coming up. And again, I think as the state starts to open up and we can physically put volunteers and census workers where our community members are, I think we'll see another, another boost.
Okay, thank you for all your work. Any questions from the council? Sure, Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that the goal is probably a hundred percent for response rate, but what do you think will be a realistic response rate percentage-wise when it's all said and done?
That's a good question. A hundred percent obviously is the ultimate goal. A complete count is considered eighty percent, and Lowell finished in twenty-ten at about sixty-two percent. So, I think anywhere above sixty-two percent, but ideally, we're trying to get to eighty. We really want to get to eighty. Obviously, we want to get to a hundred, but I think our goal is eighty percent.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Christine. Lowell High Graduation Report. Counselor Rock? Any questions?
I know, just a big thank you on behalf of our parents of seniors and seniors in the city of Lowell, Madam Manager. I know the outreach that you did and the work that you and your office put in, so once again, thank you very much. And also put a thanks to Superintendent Boyd for helping organize this as well. It's a good thing for the city of Lowell going forward, so much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam, so opening of parks, playgrounds, and pools, Madam Manager?
Counselor, that's my motion.
Oh, it is, all right. I couldn't find the name up there. Okay. Sure, Counselor Samaras?
No, I want to thank the manager for the information provided. The only thing that seems to be missing is the opening of playgrounds specifically. The motion talked a lot about pools and the problems in setting up the swimming pools. Maybe the city manager could go over a little bit so that constituents can see what's going to happen, especially during these hot days. But I also want to know if the playgrounds are actually opening.
We, we, they, they have opened, Counselor.
Okay.
We, we actually opened those the first day we could under the governor's order, which was a couple of weeks ago, I believe, Christine Clancy. I think it was a couple of weeks ago that we could open playgrounds.
Yes, I don't have the exact, I don't have the exact date in front of me, but it was a couple of weeks ago, beginning of Phase Two, I believe.
Yeah, it was around the same time we also were able to put back up the basketball nets as well as the tennis court nets, so. And, and with regard to the summer program and timetable, the, as we had indicated previously in the motion response, the camps, summer camp that we would, had run in the past at the playgrounds, we were not able to do. And that was a result of the extreme requirements under the guidelines from the governor in terms of social distancing, masks, groups, and the like. It would have resulted in a small number of campers that could possibly attend and a very large number of staffers with little or nothing to do because of the restrictions on play and groups playing with, with other groups. Nonetheless, we have been working hard to try and have some summer activities for, for children in, despite the COVID situation. And now Peter Fattacanti is on the line and we have been looking at the pool situation as well as the splash pads. So, Peter, do you want to address where we stand on the pools, getting the lifeguards, and what we can do in terms of pool?
Sure, Madam Manager. We have about fourteen lifeguards.
Sure, Madam Manager. We have about 14 lifeguards we've processed. So now some of them need to be certified and then they all have to go through training. The pools are looking like they'll be ready to be filled by the end of next week. And then once the chemicals are put in and we get the testing set up, we can have our training and our swimming program to start up. The splash pads are looking to be able to start on July 3rd or 4th, except for the O'Donnell, which has to go through some significant work on the surface area, which will be starting mid to late July.
Yes.
And again, the pools have restrictions, 40% capacity, as well as restrictions for bathers and swimmers in the pools. And so we, we not have enough lifeguards to open two, but we do have enough with the staffing requirements to open one. And the South Common Pool is the one that we are opening. It's bigger than the pool at McPherson. And it gets more used, greater use, seven days a week than the one at McPherson. But we simply did not have enough lifeguards to staff both. And again, the staffing needs are increased despite the reduction of capacity that you can serve. Likewise, for the waterfront, which is a state DCR property, that some years in the past, we would staff. But we aren't able to again. We weren't able last year and the DCR likewise is not able to staff the waterfront. They have posted it to swim at your own risk. And then the, I know Joanne Belanger and Peter have been in touch with DCR regarding the North Common Pool. And I believe their plan is to open it, though it's unclear whether they have the staffing or a date. Any, any update on that, Peter, as far as North Common?
No, they told me that once they knew they had lifeguards and had an exact date of opening, they would get back to us. The gentleman I spoke to was giving the information of what we were doing to his supervisor. And they were going to look at trying to establish an opening date around our date. They wanted to be fully aware of what was going on, so that way they weren't bringing very far ahead of us and trying to take the whole bathing load with the restrictions that we have. They were looking at opening their pool around the same time as ours, but they were still looking for lifeguards as well. They were actually looking to see if we had extra guards, so that way they could hire some of ours.
Mr. Mayor, there's a second report regarding summer jobs and also programming for the playgrounds of virtual component this year.
Yeah.
Need to go to that portion of the report?
Yeah, you want to go right into that response?
So again, we are in a whole different world with the pandemic and the restrictions around what can be done in terms of camps. And this is not just municipal or public, but private camps as well. I want to credit the Recreation Department and Mr. Fattacanti for coming up with some creative things for our kids. You know that they were doing virtual learning for the past several months. Perhaps some of the programs that are being suggested will be more fun for them. Mr. Fattacanti, do you want to speak to some of the virtual programs that you have, are developing to present as part of the summer, summer activities for kids?
Sure. Part of our normal summer camp includes some activities built in by the library. They come to our three and four-year-old program several times in the summer. This year, they're still going to provide that activity, but they're going to provide it through videos. So that still will be on our website that people won't have to register for, so it can be used by anybody for the course of the summer. Our Taekwondo instructor is still going to record two lessons a week, same as we provided at our summer camps. So kids can go to the website and review the 12 Taekwondo lessons. We'll probably be posting them twice a week. So that way, as he creates them, we'll be putting them up and it'll be built on itself, so that way the kids can progress through the system like they would in our summer program. In addition to that, we're going to have a new program for Irish step dancing. We have an instructor who used to work for us who is going to videos together on how to instruct kids. So that way, they get to our interest, they can do some dance program with Irish step dancing. We're also looking at having a GD Mac performer who does some sing-alongs, some dance programs, and a finger puppet program for the kids in the four-year-old program. We have a new program that has some STEM learning and science built around dragons and aliens. So the kids will watch some virtual programming on that. And in addition to the story, they'd also learn some science to go along with it. So that way, it'll be a hopefully educational program for them throughout the summer. And then we're also doing a virtual craft program where we are going to have one of our instructors put videos together to show kids how to create the activities. And then we're going to actually create prepackaged kits that if the people are interested in, we can get them the activity supplies. So that way, they can actually do the activity with the supplies we provide at their home. And so those are going to be our virtual programs. But in addition to that, we also got our lunch service providers to agree to still provide lunch at our five summer camps, as well as our three Merrimack Valley Food Bank sites. So we'll still be providing lunches and a, what they consider a dinner, which is a two to three o'clock feeding at some of our sites for the areas of the city where they see a later attendance. And then we're also going to have, if we have the ability in Phase 3, we have some swim instructors hired. So that way, if Phase 3 starts, we'll be able to put our swim lessons back out there, Phase 3 guidelines call for that or allow for that. So that's what our programming looks like this summer.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Conway, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Peter. It sounds like you guys are doing a great job, fascinating program, a lot of work that's put into it. I had a couple of parents ask me about the pools. And because of the virus, whether there would be any changes on the way the water was tested or additional tests for that water, if you could address that. I didn't have the answer for it, so I, I just, I figured I'd ask that question tonight, so you could let the public know exactly what was going on with the, with the specific testing of water.
Sure. The Parks Division under DPW has a certified pool operator who tests the water daily. In addition to that, our lifeguards test the water every two hours. So we keep a packet at the pool that tells that it's been tested. And if it comes out of where it should be, we have the CPO add or subtract chlorine based on what the testing says. So it is tested every few hours throughout the day through the course of the summer.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other questions on the motions? Sure, Counsel Allie?
I was just going to add, there is a pool that's going to be opening at the Department of Conservation, the DCR pool, the Lowell pool. That's going to be opening this coming Friday. So you know, that's another pool that the city doesn't run, but the state runs. So it'll be, it'll be guarded, and it's the same conditions, only 40% capacity. The pools will not be opening unless there's a police officer there, because we, you know, there could be some concerns with people knowing that, you know, there's only 40% capacity. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there is a third component to this motion regarding jobs.
Yes, yeah.
Shannon Horton is, it's actually your motion on that. I know Shannon is on the Zoom meeting to address that.
Sure, Shannon, you there?
Yep, I'm here. We are going to go forward with our work experience this summer. Typically, we distribute the young adults throughout the community at nonprofits and in various city departments. But obviously, we couldn't do that this year, so we had to regroup and come back with some virtual options. And we're going to have three different components. One is going to be geared towards 14, 15-year-olds. It will be a project-based virtual service where they'll get a stipend for what they do. And then another component for 17 to 21-year-olds, where they'll get a stipend as well and also a web design certificate. And then the other portion will be kind of like the traditional, what we've had, but 145 of the, geared toward like 16 to 21-year-olds will be doing virtual career readiness. It's a curriculum that's put from the state, from the Commonwealth Corporation. And they'll be going through that and they will receive a stipend as well. And then there'll be 42 young adults who will be placed in what we traditionally would call like work sites. So the Boys and Girls Club, the Lowell Housing Authority. We'll have our van crew, which goes around the city at the direction of the Parks Department to do cleanup. We're only, we're going to limit that to half the size that it normally is and who does social distancing. So we were going to have three vans, but we would knock it down to just the one. And, you know, all of the work sites that we will be having, people that will be checking them daily to make sure they're adhering to social distancing and that they have proper PPE. And those, those 42 youth will be paid the minimum wage for, for six weeks for 25 hours a week, like we normally do. And then we were, you know, we're thankful for the police department to let us use our Shannon Grant money and extend it into the fall. So we can offer, we can continue to offer some work experience for young adults into the fall. We didn't get to do our job fair this year at Lowell High School. That was canceled. That was, that was a bummer. But we are following up with some of our, you know, employers that have hired teenagers, making sure, you know, outreaching to those teenagers that we have contacts with, that we were working with before all this started. You know, places like Heritage Ice Cream and some of the fast food places around the city, making sure that they're connected to those jobs. But it's difficult because we're not in the schools like normal. But they're, they are working daily on trying to connect youth that are looking for part-time jobs with those opportunities.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Just one quick question and not to really spring this on you now, but when you talk about into the late fall, when the kids go back to school and the college kids go back, can we make use of any of the, you know, the Lowell, the shelter, anybody over there that wants to get a job, anybody that wants to get off there, get started, you know? And maybe we could look into that and start training some of the people that are down on their luck and maybe give them a hand to get started. Maybe it could lead to something more. Seen some of the stories that come out of CTI, kids that are homeless and young adults that are homeless. And if we just give them a start, maybe it could help them. So maybe we could just look into that too with the Shannon Grant.
Yeah, I mean, we make a big effort to, to connect like CTI to, you know, we work with, closely with the police department, with other nonprofits in the city. Because these grants are geared towards the at-risk, low-income homeless, EYS-involved, foster care. You know, they're geared towards that population. So Heather Dunn, who runs our young adult program, is very well-connected with the CLYDC, which is run by Mary Ann Bellada and the Police Department. And so we're, yeah, we'll definitely reach out to that, to that population for the Shannon Grant.
Okay. Thank you very much, Shannon. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, this isn't on the agenda, but it's one quick notice that, again, I'm sensitive. That if a council permits Natasha Vance could give the council regarding Go Lowell in an upcoming meeting, that she can take one minute to tell if that's okay.
Sure. Need a motion to suspend the rules by Counselor Rock, second by Counselor Samaras. Sure, go ahead.
Hi, thank you very much, Counselors, Madam Manager, Mayor Leahy. So we are moving forward with the Go Lowell project. We have the Go Lowell Phase 2 workshop, which would normally have been a public meeting, but obviously, we will be holding that virtually. It will be on Tuesday, June 30th. It'll start at 6:00 p.m. and will run until about 7:30 p.m. It will be available in multiple languages, English, Spanish, Portuguese, and Khmer. People can go to the website to find information. That's also, we have been posting it on social media. Essentially, people can, in order to enable only people who attend the meeting to join this Zoom call, they would get an Eventbrite ticket in their language of choice and they can join the meeting. We will have breakouts. Essentially, we are telling everyone what we learned during the public outreach, which was Phase 1. Let them know, ask if we've missed anything and give people an opportunity to let us know what they think about our ideas for moving forward with better pedestrian biking and transit options within the city. So that's June 30th at 6:00 p.m., Go Lowell 2 workshop. And there is information on the website and on the city's social media. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Natasha. I saw you working very hard today on Eno's Street. So nice job. I need a motion to accept and place on file the motion responses by Counselor Mercier, second by?
Mr. Mayor, I have a concern here before you leave this.
Okay. Just seconded by Counselor Chow. Go ahead, Counselor Mercier.
Before we leave, the communications from the city manager and the motion responses, I'd like to suspend the rules to just respond on a motion that I made, if I can do that, regarding St. Helia. All right, thank you.
Motion to suspend the rules by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Rock, Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here is a response that I observed when I went by St. Helia's. And we, I asked through my motion to remove those two boxes. And if you know, those Planet Aid yellow boxes had caution tape around them. And I said, oh, they're finally going to go. Well, you know, they did go. If you go by, they're gone. You know where they are? They're on the side of the laundromat. So instead of them having two boxes there, they added these two. I don't know how that defeated, how that solved the problem by moving the, the boxes from one part of the property to the other side. I'm very disgusted with that. That is a way to do business with the City of Lowell. And I'm going to tell you, the next time I see all kind of debris and junk out there, I'm going to hold a press conference myself, because I'm very disturbed about that. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, we will follow up and find out. They were supposed to remove them, not move them. And we'll follow up, Counselor, with the property owner as well as Planet Aid, because the direction was, was unequivocal. And that was to move them, take them away. So we will follow up there.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you. While we're on this suspension, could I just ask, Madam Manager, and I know Counselor Mercier has brought this up. The end of Burnham Road, the neighbors are calling it, it's getting worse. And they even took pictures of all the skidoo. Okay. And so I think that's further down the line here too, but just to bring that up again. So I don't know if we can partner with Drakehead or Methuen Police.
I have a motion, I have a motion, Mr. Mayor, on the very subject. And you are now saying what I'm going to talk about.
All right. Sorry about that. I'll bring it. I just wanted to not forget that. All right, back to the most, back to the meeting. 4.2, appoint Sam Bathany, Britton Bronya, and Rhonda Goffstein to the Cultural Council. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Chow, second by Counselor Rock. 4.3, appoint Brian Gorman and Walter O'Neil Jr. for the Veterans Commission. Need a motion to adopt and by Counselor Rock, second by Counselor Samaras. Roll call. Counselor Rock?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Eight days.
Thank you. Vote to the city manager. Counselor Conway, are you there?
Yes.
Do you want to make a motion?
I wanted to bundle the, I believe it's 5.4 to 5.11. Make a motion to bundle those.
Okay, you didn't want to bundle them all?
All right, we'll bundle them all. Why don't we go 5.1 to 5.11 then? All right, we'll bundle them all. Why don't we go five one to five eleven then?
All right. There's no objection. We'll bundle all the votes, five one to five ten.
Five eleven.
Five eleven, sorry. Yep. So motion by Counselor Conway, second by Counselor Chow. Vote to the City Manager, five one, vote to accept gift of ten thousand dollars from Eastern Bank Trustees to support local COA. Vote to accept and expend twenty-five thousand for the Fed Corona nineteen relief funds. Vote five three, vote authorize City Manager execute temporary access agreement to one seventy-nine Bridge Street. Five four, vote ballpark capital transfer vote. Five five, vote disability commission revolving twenty thousand. Vote five six, vote parking energy transfer. Five seven, vote revolving fund spending limit. Five eight, vote rideshare funding transfer. Five nine, transfer earmark nine eleven memorial. Five ten, vote wastewater energy transfer vote. And five eleven, vote year-end payroll adjustment. So I need a roll call.
I need a motion.
Motion to adopt by Counselor Conway, second by Counselor Chow. Roll call. Council Rock.
Yes.
Council Samaras.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercier.
Yes.
Council New. Eight yes. Okay. Thank you. Report Subcommittee, Finance Subcommittee, June twenty-third, twenty twenty. Counsel Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Subcommittee met at six o'clock. Regards to a motion response to Counsel Conway regarding the courthouse on, on Heard Street and the possibility of using it as a police station. We did get a report back from the City Manager, who's been in contact with DCAM, Department of Capital Asset Management and Modernization, who indicated a appraisal, the property has been appraised for four hundred eighty-five thousand with a demolition cost of eight hundred thousand for a total of one point three million if the city was interested. There was discussion about the Subcommittee on, you know, potential uses. Once, one option is to, you know, engage in a purchase, purchase, sale, and demolish the property and use, use it as a surface parking. There's possibly a hundred and twenty thousand spots. Connebalon provides some financial information that if we did pursue this avenue to purchase the property from DCAM, we have, the municipalities have the right of refusal. The debt service would be approximately seventy-one thousand. If we went to leasing the property, either, you know, market rate or let's say an average or more reasonable lease rate, about seventy-six thousand could be realized on an annual basis. There would be some upfront capital investment cost as well. So the, this conversation with DCAM and Commissioner Gladstone and the City Manager was prior to the COVID. Coronavirus. And so the expectation was if we went back and maybe we can negotiate a better price, considering the economic conditions that take place now. So there was motion made by myself, the second by Counsel Conway, to have the City Manager with no commitment, just go back to the Commissioner of DCAM to, you know, see if we can negotiate this, you know, this cost down. You know, we all know we've been, Finance Subcommittee meeting has been meeting on a, on a regular basis, knowing the, you know, sort of fiscal dire circumstances that we face. But the other hand is, you know, this is a piece of property located in a central business district. And, you know, it seems like it would be important for the city to have control of the site. And either we will develop or, you know, works developer for, you know, tax revenue. So that's a report of progress. That is a motion that was put forward. No commitment at all whatsoever. Just continue the conversation or dialogue, if you will, with the City Manager. See if we can negotiate with DCAM. You know, the other concern that I had is, you know, if, if we don't move forward on it, what will DCAM do? How long will it sit there? Is it gonna be another vacant building downtown because of the demolition cost? So there's still a lot of options out there. And we just felt that we should pursue getting the property from DCAM. And then, you know, we'll have that control of, of that site. It's approximately one point acres. That's pretty valuable property in, in the central business district. So, Mr. Mayor, that's a report of progress from the Finance Subcommittee. And that was a motion that we made to bring to the full council to have the man proceed with further discussions with Commissioner Gladstone at DCAM.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Council Rock.
No, if, if the chairman needs a second on his motion, I can do that.
Okay. So I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do a motion to accept the report of progress and the motion by Counsel Elliot, second by Counsel Rock. Roll call. All right, thank you. Went to petitions, seven one, there's a claim property damage. Motion refer to Law Department for reporting recommendation by Counsel Elliot, second by Counsel Drinkwater.
Mr. Ma, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, Madam. Sure.
Could I respond to that? I, I appreciate Judy's petition of the concern to relieve the election.
All right, this is, this is seven one for us. Let me just, okay, so we.
The property damage.
Okay, all right. So now with seven, now with a seven two miscellaneous. Yep, go ahead.
Well, let the speaker.
I'm sorry, let me just read it quickly. Clerk's yelling at me. Miscellaneous. Lowell Democratic City Committee requests permission to address City Council regarding allowing Attorney Elliot Valesio, interim Director of Elections to relieve of all non-election-related duties from August through November twenty twenty so that he can devote his full-time efforts on election duties, ensuring an efficient, fair, and open election. Sure, Judith Durant is a speaker on this, but go ahead, Counsel Mercier.
Yes, is she here to speak on it?
Yes.
Well, let her speak first.
Mariah, can you get, Mariah? Okay. Judy, if you're there, Mr. Durant, you can speak. You got it?
So she left.
There's another registered speaker too. All right, we're trying to get Judith Durant back for us. This is Sally Coulter.
Mr. Mayor, in the meantime, can I ask the, the City Manager and the Solicitor if she's on there? I mean, it seems like, you know, I, I'm not sure why, why we're entertaining this. You know, we as City Councils, we're not allowed to direct the City Manager.
This is Judith Durant. I was calling in. Is this happening?
Okay, yeah, just one minute. Judith, did you wanna finish up?
Okay.
Counsel Elliot.
Yeah, well, I'd just like an opinion from the city Solicitor following the registered speaker.
Okay. All right, we'll let registered speaker Judith Durant speak. Continue, Elliot, Judith.
Thank you. Yes, I am here. This is Judith Durant. I'm the Chair of the Lowell Democratic City Committee. It has been more than one year since the previous Director of Elections that left the position, saw a replacement. And it seems that many people don't know that we have an interim director that, as that information doesn't appear on the city's website. After some discussion and a vote of the Executive Committee, we saw a few abstentions and the rest yes votes and submitted this motion to the city clerk. Quote, "The Lowell Democratic City Committee appreciates the excellent job that Elliot Veloso has done as interim Director of Elections since his appointment. Pursuant to the House and Senate passage of an act relative to voting options in response to mail-in voting and extended early voting, we ask that Mr. Veloso be relieved of all non-election-related duties from August through November twenty twenty so he can devote his full-time efforts to the election duties, ensuring an efficient, fair, and open election." End quote. That's the, the end of the motion. And I'd just like to add that while we understand that COVID nineteen has presented challenges to the city's working environment, environment, as well as the budget, we feel that in view of the changes in procedure, it's important to absolutely be sure that everyone has ample opportunity to vote and that each and every one of those votes will be counted. And that's all I have to say on it. Thank you.
May, you're on mute.
But Judith's still speaking? Hello?
Might be a technicality. I saw on the screen that two deaths left the meeting. So it might be a technicality.
Okay. Should I go? Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sally Coulter.
Sorry, I know. Go ahead. Sorry. You're all set, Ms. Coulter?
Okay. I'm Sally Coulter, two hundred Market Street. I'm War Two Chair of the Democratic City Committee. We recognize the financial difficulties imposed on the city by COVID nineteen. But this is a very difficult and important time for Lowell's elections. The Massachusetts House and Senate have passed bills allowing early voting, mail-in ballots, and various measures to keep voters who vote in person safe during COVID. This bill will now go to a joint committee to iron out differences. But the bill is widely expected to be passed, go to the governor, and be signed into law. These are big changes and require extra work for town clerk and local officials. Lowell has not had a permanent election, election director since Ed Metcalf left in May two thousand nineteen. Those election duties have fallen to Assistant City Solicitor Elliot Veloso.
Are you still there?
Well, I, I hear it on the, I hear myself.
Yeah, I just need to shut your TV off, though.
Okay, these election duties have fallen to Assistant City Solicitor Elliot Veloso, who has other responsibilities as well. Reducing Mr. Veloso's non-election duties during the key election times compromise attempt to see that the elections are fairly safely and expeditiously carried out in Lowell while keeping the city's budgetary concerns to a minimum. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll let the manager go next, but yes, we cannot instruct the manager on on the hiring or running of departments. But Madam Manager, or did you wanna go first?
I, I believe the Solicitor is trying to call in. And I think Counsel Elliot was, was questioning.
Okay. I don't see her on the, there she is.
Oh, there she is. Okay.
All right, why don't we hear from the, Joe, why don't we hear from Counsel Elliot first and then we'll go to the剩下.
I know Counsel Mercier wanted to speak and I don't want to speak for her.
All right, Counsel Mercier, then Counsel Elliot. Just you have to unmute, Rita. You're like me.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
I feel like the Verizon man. Can you hear me now? But that's all right. I was a little bit concerned like Counsel Elliot about Judy's petition of concern to relieve the election interim director from all other duties in an effort to ensure an efficient, fair, and open election. Because I don't think that, I don't think that a citizen can direct the City Manager. But be that as it may, we'll get a ruling from the Solicitor. But since we're concerned with a fair and open election, I'm gonna segue in with this petition from Judy. And I'm requesting that we make sure that an election commissioner that is now working for Senator Ed Kennedy, I want you, Madam Manager, to ensure to this council that she will be removed from her duties as her involvement in any election capacity at this time will be looked at, to me, as a conflict of interest. That's my concern right there, in an effort to be fair and, and open. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you. Counsel Elliot, do, do you wanna finish up?
I just wanna hear from the Solicitor. I mean, I think, I just wanna, I just wanna say that I think Mr. Veloso has done an incredible job and every single member of this council has reiterated that, so.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
This motion is out of order.
Hi, good evening. To, to address the question raised by Counsel Elliot, the motion is out of order. And it's for this reason. If this was a, a motion of the council originating with one of the councilors, it would be a violation of the planning form of government. It would be direct interference with the manager's managerial prerogative. And even though it is coming to the council as a petition, the council is still being asked to weigh in on it and to approve it as a, as a motion. And so in that sense, it is out of, out of order for the reasons that have already been, been stated. As far as the, the election office, if I may, the, um, this has been a department that has always worked in conjunction with and under the, under the Law Department. I, I wholeheartedly agree the, the effort and the work that was done by Elliot Veloso, as well as his predecessor in making sweeping and substantive changes in that office. Those changes and the, and the quality of work has never stopped and nor will it, regardless of the current status of the, of the position.
Thank you. Don't wait, wait. Sure, Madam Manager.
If, if I could just say a couple of words, I wanna echo the sentiment that Attorney Veloso has done an outstanding job in that office. And it is all of our interests. And I think the council, as well as the administration, that we assure efficient, fair, and, and open election process. I want everybody in the city to know that is our highest priority. And this is not a situation of cutting corners for budgetary purposes. That couldn't be further from the truth. The full-time effort is devoted to this office. It has been and will be. We have also actively advertised this position for many months. We have tried to put a permanent director. But in the meantime, Attorney Veloso has served honorably and, and without exception, has provided excellent work. And we will continue to be committed to very fair elections. We are following the legislation regarding mail-in vote, so forth, as closely as anybody else. And we will make sure that we abide completely by whatever the terms are that the legislature ultimately arrives at, that every voter in Lowell has the adequate representation through the election office.
Thank you. Sure, Counsel Rock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm not sure what kind of political statement was trying to be made this evening. But I would just thank the speakers for their time and move on.
Thank you. So no further action at this time. City Council motions. Eight, one. Counsel Elliot, request Transportation Public Safety Subcommittee's meet with the Superintendent of Police to develop a plan to issue citations to excessively loud vehicles in the neighborhood, seconded by Counsel Mercier. Counsel Elliot.
Motion speaks for itself, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor. This is not a new issue. Mercy speaks for itself, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor. This is not a new issue. However, I've received a number of emails, and I think, and many have received them in phone calls and texts. People are working at home a lot more, and, you know, this is more of a nuisance. We've, we've all talked about this in the past, but I think we have to come up with a strategy, knowing that people are at home, they're going to be at home for the foreseeable future, and, and the vehicles driving through the neighborhood with these loud mufflers and loud music is, is more prevalent now than ever. So I know it's not an, an easy task as the chief, but we, we've got to come up with a resolution to address this, you know, the downtown everywhere. And, you know, it's going to mean writing citations, and the police are going to have to be there. And, you know, it's, it's very frustrating, and it's not an easy, but I'd like to see what the city manager and the chief of police can come up with on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Eight-two. Counsel Elliot requests city manager have BPD prepare plan to submit a request to MassDOT for funding under the Sheer Street and Space Grant Program for projects which will recurpose parking to better support roadside pickup and outdoor dining, seconded by Counselor Chow. Counsel Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, it, it's a long motion, but it's all inclusive. This is a grant program that was just released. It was last week, and the city manager and her staff, I contacted them on it, and they were, they were already meeting with folks. This is money being made available, available from the state, helps small businesses, free outdoor seating in a safe manner with, with Jersey barriers, which is what the, what the administration, city manager and planning development have, have already been working on. So I look forward to the report. I know they've already met, acknowledged a proposition, because this project is looking for, for this, this funding grant fund, they're looking for projects that are shovel-ready. And so the city is right on top of it. So, thank you, and I look forward to the report. Mr. Manager has anything to add?
Counsel Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Counsel Rodney Elliott for making this motion. It's a, it's a great motion. From my understanding, they can grant from $5,000 to $300,000. I don't know if that's correct or not, from what I read online. And, you know, it's extensive. It covers three areas. Most likely, that hopefully we can use that for outdoor dining and commerce, like the streetery and cafes. But I think it also covers, like, better buses, and the third category covers is the safe route to school, which is basically making, like, you know, like you said, sidewalks and streets to be safe for pedestrians. In general, in the town or city, hopefully we could use that money for the street, recent cafes as well. So it's a great motion, and for, thank you for bringing it to the attention of the city.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight by Counsel Elliot requests city manager have Animal Advisory Board report on assistance provided by the MSPCA during the COVID crisis, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater. Counsel Elliot?
Thank you. I, I had received, I, I still chair the Animal Advisory Committee, so I wanted to have them come in. They've done, they've done great work, and I just want to let people in the city know that this is clearly an all-inclusive process, and they have done great work, and they wanted to just come and share this. So perhaps in the next meeting, Mr. Mayor, under your business or, we could have some representatives from the MSPCA come in and see how they've cared for so many animals during this, during this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll make a note of that. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight by Counsel Samaras requests city manager have proper department seat to the cleanup of Ecumenical Plaza, seconded by Counselor Rock. Counsel Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion basically speaks for itself, but I've had some concerns raised by members of the church, especially Holy Trinity, that some of the homeless have, and that's an issue that we have to deal with, taking over some of the areas. At Ecumenical Plaza, there have been mattresses, the stairwells have been used as bathrooms, and this has been quite disconcerting to some of the churchgoers. So I'm just looking at, you know, what the city can do to ensure that the area is clean, and what we can do to assist the homeless in, in getting housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, Counsel Samaras. Counsel Noon requests city manager instruct law department to draft an ordinance to establish a citizens advisory committee to help provide public input and recommendations to the Lowell Police Department. He's not here, so I'll need a second. Yeah, so let me just get a second, because Counsel Noon was unable to make a meeting tonight. Counselor Chow, Counsel Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, in preparing for tonight's meeting, I recall that Counsel Conway last, at the last meeting reminded us that Lowell Police Department was listed as one of the top 14 police departments in the country during the Obama administration. But I would also remind you that during the administration of Chief Edward Davis, when he established community policing, that President Clinton and Attorney General, Attorney General Janet Reno came to Lowell to recognize the success of community policing, and it continues today under Chief Richardson. However, recent events have changed our focus. The death of George Floyd has caused a furore, and as a result, police departments all over the country have come under fire. So it's important that a discussion and actions take place to ensure that racial equality is truly part of the fabric that makes up the city of Lowell. Therefore, the purpose of this motion is to assure that we can foster, foster and facilitate communication and understanding between the Lowell Police Department and the city of Lowell. First, I want to commend Chief Kelly Richardson for stating that he wants to establish a citizens advisory board. He, in a sense, took the bull by the horn. By creating this motion, it will allow the city council to support the city manager and the police chief on setting up the board. I would also hope that they would look at the university to get expertise on how to run effective meetings. Though I believe that this board, that the citizens of Lowell must have an understanding, I believe with the board, but I, I see that the citizens will have an understanding of police practices and procedures, and the police department will become better informed about the needs of the citizen. It's all about listening and understanding to better serve. I want to point out that communities like Framingham and Beverly and others throughout the country have benefited, benefited by these boards. This advisory committee will help ensure that a strong position, a strong, positive, and trusting relationship will exist between the citizens of Lowell and Lowell Police Department. You know, from the, I, I looked, I did some research over these various departments, and like, the vision for the Framingham Police Department is that the effective delivery of public safety service requires the police partnering with the citizens to ensure safety of all citizens. So I want to conclude with a line from Obama's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, that we emphasize the importance of citizens' involvement in policing as a strategy to improve trust between the law enforcement and the public. So basically, we have Chief Kelly wanting to go in this direction. I'm just asking the city council, give the city manager and the chief the support that they need to create an ordinance that will allow the chief to be able to elicit support from the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Sure, Counsel Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to voice my support for this motion. I thank Counselors Samaras and Counsel Noon for making this motion, and I want to commend the chief on the Lowell Police Department for really being ahead of the curve. And, you know, I know that the police department and the chief want to have this advisory committee and to have the full support of the city council behind it. It's very, very important to show unity. From my understanding, that if you can put together different members across the city, from different groups of people, from the young to the professionals, from the Southeast Asian community, from Hispanics, African Americans, the law enforcement professional, as well as the youth, I think we could have a greater relationship with the police department and with the community. And we know when the police department has a good relationship with the community, we know that there'll be less crime in the city, better understanding, and more respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the motion? Do we do a roll call, Counsel Samaras?
That's, that's a, yes. Thank you.
Yeah, roll call. Counsel Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Amel Aggie?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Eight aces.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eight-six. Eight-six. Counsel Mercy requests city manager provide a report updating the progress of the Task Force to End Homelessness and what has been accomplished so far, seconded by Counsel Elliot. Counsel Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion is asking for an update on the progress of the Task Force to End Homelessness, and seeing all the people sleeping in parks and doorways, I was curious as to what's happening up to this point. I know CPI is making a great effort to help out with this. I don't know what everybody else is doing, but that's why I'm bringing up the motion. I realize that the coronavirus put a damper on the effort, but I remember some years ago, and many of you may know this, like Counsel Elliot, when Linda King was in charge of, she was in charge of the previous Task Force to End Homelessness. I was wondering if we ever looked back at the findings there? Are we trying to improve on it? What's going on? I say this because my concern and pet peeve has always been that studies are done, such as the Rock Bridge, Task Force are created, like the one in the Planning Department years ago with Linda King, but no one ever refers to it, and it seems that all that effort went by the wayside. I want to know if this is happening this time. I know that no one wants to hear it, but will we ever end homelessness? I don't, I don't think so. But we could put a dent in it and try to get people into housing. I don't think we'll ever end poverty. We can try, and that'll make us feel better, but when I look at all the homeless sleeping in parks and doorways, we first must concentrate on the drug problem that is making some of the people homeless. We must concentrate on suitable wages, because the working poor cannot afford a place to live. Not everybody on the street is on drugs. People can't afford an apartment. So mental illness is running rampant. The Solomon Mental Health is closed. We, we close all the things that are necessary, and we throw the people out to fend for themselves. They're not taking their medicine properly. We're doing everything we can with the co-op team. We must concentrate on housing. So this motion asks, where are we this far? Give me some hope. That's, that's why I made this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Madam Manager?
Thank you. And, and we can give you a, a report. Counsel, you, you hit the nail on the head. You know, there are efforts going on. We'll give you the report as to the housing. You're right, getting people into sustainable housing, and the, the Lowell Transitional Living Center is working with the Lowell Housing Authority to do that. They're hopefully buying this. But, you know, the city's homelessness problem has been there. It is so much worse during this crisis, and because the, the shelter has reduced its capacity to have social distancing, so instead of having 110 people there, they have 50. You know, what happens to the other 60 people? And, you know, but we have been working with others, trying to engage other providers, as well as the shelter. But we will get you the full report. It is a, it is a tough problem, but as you point out, at the same time that people are being turned out from shelter because of the virus, because they need to socially distance, providers have closed the doors, or they're, they're closing their doors, or they're not working, or, you know, outreach workers aren't working, they're working remotely. Well, it's hard to work remotely when you're trying to work with the homeless. And so it's been a really difficult situation for the homeless, giving them, you know, food, the whole bit. And I know you see it, so we'll get you the report, Counselor.
If I could make one other comment, please?
Sure.
You know, when my children were small and we lived on Royal Street, we, I didn't like them to be in the street riding a bike, so we'd put all the bikes in the truck, and we'd go over to the South Common and let them ride around there. And in the winter, we taught them how to ski on that hill across from the Elliot Church. I'd be afraid today to bring my children to that park at the South Common. There is feces all over the place. I, I don't know if the Elliot Church could open up the bathrooms for them, but I don't know what they'd do at night. I wonder if we could put at least one outhouse there. I, I think something has to be done, and if we have a grant or extra money, Jesus, let's try to do something. I mean, it's a...
You're, you're absolutely right, and that's what we've been working. The Elliot Church is open part-time, but not evenings or weekends, and we are working with Life Connections. So stay tuned, because we're hoping we can give them the resources to have portable bathrooms, as well as restrooms, and, and other, other staff to do that. So it's, it's a huge problem, but we've been working with our, with other providers in the community. And I'm, I'm happy to say, the past week or so, we're making some good progress.
Thank you very much.
But it's, it's a situation out there, say the least.
Sure, any further discussion? Sure, Madam Manager, I just want to applaud your efforts. I know that you're, you and your staff have been working on this. It's not an easy problem to solve, and I want people to know that we take it seriously, and I know how hard you work. So thank you. Next motion tonight, this is a great motion. Counsel Mercy requests city manager have coordinated an effort among the LPD, Tewksbury PD, Massachusetts Environment, Environmental Police, and the Mass Department of Fish and Games to prevent outsiders from destroying the neighborhood and the riverbank at the end of Burnham Road, seconded by, seconded by myself. Counsel Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am all for recreation and having, letting people have fun and being down along the river, lakes, oceans. But when people come into a neighborhood and raise havoc and create an annoying amount of noise in an area not designed to be used for that type of activity, that's where the problem begins. And this is what motion is saying, that this problem is not going away, but getting louder, larger, and worse. It, it started last year, and I thought we ended it last year, but it's getting even worse. The Lowell Police Department have been more than diligent. They came here every time they were called. There were 25 cars at one time along the street. There was motorbikes, people unloading cooking grills off of their truck. Eight people were carrying chairs, tons of cases of beer, all left on the shore. The police stayed up the street and stopped and ran 16 plates. They all came back with Lawrence addresses. These people are defiant when the police tell them to leave. They do leave, and they come back 20 minutes later and start all over again. This parade starts between 5:00 and 6:00 every day. It used to be on weekends. Now it's every single day. It used to be on weekends. Now it's every single day. They stay there until sunset, seven days a week. There are several jet skis repeatedly driving back and forth in a small area, revving their engines, which can be heard with windows closed and the TV on. The noise is becoming annoying. I'm getting emails from city website from people who live in Tewksbury. They are residents at the Merrimack Meadows condominium complex. I don't know how they knew that I was making this motion, but they did respond to it and said, "Thank you for, for helping in some way." When these people leave at sundown, they have their headlights on and it resembles a funeral procession with all the cars going up the street. Now they're starting to get mad at the neighbors on the street and they rev up their cars and they do skid marks. If you don't believe me, come in front of my house and you'll see the skid marks that they're doing, trying to scare the daylights out of us, as if to say, "We can get you." But you know what? I have to stand up to these people. They parked all up Burnham Road and around the corner on River Road. They got it so congested that the LRTA bus could not make the turn and he's the one that called the police. When, when the LPDs are called, the people move a few feet down and they go into Tewksbury so that the Lowell Police Department's hands are tied. I need a full court press on this issue. Some years ago, a young lady got killed by a jet ski who ran into her at the Boulevard near the Bellegard Bath House. And an ordinance was issued to prevent jet skis from being in that certain area. I need to add to that ordinance and ban jet skis and water, water skiing and partying along the residential neighborhoods in Belvedere. I would like a cooperative effort of all parties specified in the motion. Lowell Police Department, Tewksbury Police, Mass- Massachusetts Envir- Environmental Police, because these parties are destroying the environment with their bottles and trash and litter. And the Mass Department of Fish and Games, who is responsible for conserving the Commonwealth's natural resources. I thought, I, I, I thought that I would like to refer this motion to the Neighborhood Subcommittee, but I'm not gonna do that because today I received a call from Deputy uh, Goldner, uh, Goldner. He said to me, "Rather than do that," he said, "I have some suggestions." And I was asked by the chief to give you a call. Why don't we set up an, uh, set up a meeting next week? And he will have the head of the Environmental Police, Sean Santos. He will um, have if, but I'm asking if we could have Natasha Vance, the Transportation Engineer, and come up with a plan to create a parking restriction on residential partying only in that immediate area to give the police some teeth to work with. There are ways that we can combat this, but right now there's really not much teeth to work with. They have a sign down the street, "No uh, loitering, police take notice," but it isn't enough. It isn't enough. Uh, I think we can come to some consensus if we meet next week with the police chief, Deputy Goldner and, and um, the people that I mentioned. If you could, Madam Manager, have Christine O'Connor there so that we don't do something that violates the law. But I think we need an ordinance that the police can have uh, tools to work with. We need to do something. If I can't take care of my own street, then I, I shouldn't be sitting in this seat. And I'm sorry that I'm given a lot of attention to it, but hey, they're relying on someone and, and I live on the street. I don't hear any of that, 'cause I'm up further enough, I don't hear it. But I feel bad for the people that live down in the immediate area. They can't even listen to their TV without the ruckus that's going on there. I'm sorry to monopolize this, but that's what I have to say. Thank you.
We, we will have whoever's necessary for that meeting and we may even want to include Drackett um, as well because
Yes, absolutely.
They were coming across the river from Drackett. Um, they must be putting in, you know, on the, on somewhere. And if it's the Drackett side, we need to have all the areas, so.
Thank you so much.
We will, we will follow up.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion of the night. Councilor Noon, Councilor Drinkwater, request city manager have board of elections commissioners hold a hearing to explore preparation for the upcoming 2020 elections in September and November to include implementation of legislative changes to vote by mail, early in-person voting due to COVID-19 pandemic and representatives from the Secretary of State's office, Lowell Elections Office, other relative state and city departments, voting advocacy organizations and members of the public to be invited to testify, seconded by Councilor Samaras, Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I think this motion honestly contains some of the, the same essence of the, the citizen's petition that came up earlier tonight. I think it just gets at it in a, a different way. Um, there's a recognition that uh, we're gonna have some of the most substantial changes to election law uh, for this upcoming election and they're only going to be implemented, um, you know, within a couple of months of the actual election itself. Um, there's bills that have passed in, in both the House and the Senate. Uh, they're currently conference, uh, most likely, I think the early, earliest they would become law is July and we have a very early primary this year on September first. So I think um, ha- having a hearing, um, where the public can be informed of, of what these changes to election are. Um, there's gonna be a big, um, you know, early voting applications, uh, sent to all, all voters, uh, potentially changes to polling places very close uh, to the actual election to make sure we can adequately staff all of our polling places. So these are very big changes and I think it would just be important to, to get them out there, um, in as public a way as possible to both, um, make sure we're prepared and also make sure, um, voters are, are prepared to be able to, um, vote, uh, in accordance with all the, the new rules that are in place for our, our health and safety. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sure, Councilor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am supportive of this motion as well. Uh, you know, with the new legislation, it offers three options to the registered voters. Uh, one is extended early voting period. The second is voting in person on Election Day. And the third course is voting by mail. And as Councilor Drinkwater, um, said, you know, we just wanna make sure that uh, the people who want to vote, um, feel safe and that it is accessible, um, that they can vote. So, uh, it's a good motion. I support it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sure, Councilor Elliott?
Yeah, I concur. I think a hearing is, um, is gonna be important as we move forward. We know, we know things as you know, a- as we've conducted elections in the past, they're gonna change and change significantly. So I, I think the more out we, we can do to let people know what's going on, what, once the bill is passed and signed, um, will be helpful and, and we can get ahead of it. So uh, there is no normal. This, this is gonna be a, a big change for the, you know, deviation from the normal. I think it makes sense to get out in front and, and hold probably more than just, um, you know, one, one hearing to, to talk about this. We want people to get out to vote. We gotta tell them how they can do it.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Uh, last motion of the night. Councilor Conway, request city manager provide an update on the status and the progress of Route 133 Andover Street in regards to calming solutions for safety in traffic, seconded by Councilor Mercia. Uh, there is a registered speaker. Would we like them to go first, Councilor Conway?
Yes, absolutely.
Go. Mr. Clark, she's there. Laura Gilmore? Go, Ms. Gilmore?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi there. Um, I'm here to speak in response to Councilor Conway's motion about Andover Street. I'm here tonight because the street I live on is un- I'm here because no action has been taken to make my street safer. I'm also here to speak in favor of the need for a broader traffic calming effort in the city because there's been a lot of conversation about dangerous conditions on major streets. In my neighborhood, they include Andover Street as well as cut-through streets, um, between 133 and Route 38, like Clark, Douglas and East Merrimack. In the three years I've lived on Andover Street, cars have sped down the street and it's been nearly impossible to cross the street. My family never crosses to the other side of Andover Street while walking. We pull over and wait for a break in speeding traffic so that we can back into our driveway because it's too hard to get out otherwise. Since the COVID crisis began, our street has seen the same trend as elsewhere. Fewer cars on the road has led to more flooding and even more dangerous conditions. I've noticed also an increase in heavy truck traffic on our residential street. Conditions are increasingly unsafe and we need to have a plan to do something more than occasional police enforcement. Andover Street is one of the main gateways into Lowell and it should be one of the best. Because it's a wide street, there's plenty of room to do a complete street treatment. Instead, it's one of the only gateways into the city that hasn't been prioritized for some multimodal improvement. Over the past two years, there have been at least four motions about dangerous traffic and speeding on Andover Street and also a large number about the need for formal traffic calming at locations throughout the city. But the street is still dangerous and conditions are made even more dangerous by the increasing number of people out walking and biking to get out of the house and stay away from others while this traffic continues to move. After the last motion response, the city staff repainted Andover Street and stretched its bike lanes, but it didn't make much difference. The travel lanes are still oversized at thirteen feet wide and the turning lane functions as a third travel lane that people drive in to avoid slowing down for anything. There are almost no visual cues to slow down, no controlled intersections, almost no crosswalks, just wide open road to speed down. And while I understand that this is a tough time, there are financial and perhaps jurisdictional challenges here, we need to talk about how to make things safer soon. There has to be a way to find a way to do small improvements through paint or flex posts at least. I recently heard that Rep. Nangle has proposed nearly a million dollars for a veterans park in Belvedere. If funding is a challenge, why not use some of that funding instead for something that people have been asking for repeatedly? That much money would go a long way towards the purchase of planters, bollards or paint. I'd ask also that the city work with the neighborhood to hear their input about how to make this road safer and that you think about tactical solutions, cheaper, flexible ways to slow down the street. I know some people will say it can't be done, but I believe the only crosswalk on Andover Street at Douglas Road was in fact a tactical intervention, painted by a resident frustrated with the lack of action to improve traffic on the street. Things have to get pretty bad for someone to go out in the middle of the night with a bucket of paint. So let's try to slow things down before it gets to that point again.
Thank you. Um, I do believe we did, the city did do the, the crosswalk on Douglas Road intersection. I just wanna um, make that correction. I don't know if someone repainted it, but I know that that was put in by the city. Um, but we hear you. Councilor Conway?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, and I certainly appreciate the speaker. Uh, uh, she is obviously right on target. Uh, this, this is a, a situation that has been a problem for years. I think there's a, a number of city councils are sitting here right now and, uh, be present or in task uh, that have put some type of a motion on, uh, to try to make Andover a safer place. It's something that it, it certainly is a disaster waiting to happen. I know that many people, the speeding is terrible. Uh, and, and again, I understand that you can't take a police officer and have him sit there uh, all day long. I think, I think we're very aware of that. But I also, I, I also believe that uh, we have to make, uh, streets like this, um, a type of a street where people know that they have to be extremely careful or they are gonna get a ticket. Whether the police officer is there or not, it's almost like being like Pavlov's dog. There are certain places like the connector. If you recall what happens, the, the, the police rode in the connector and it got to the point where even if you didn't see a police officer, you immediately started to slow down. I think as far as the, uh, as far as Andover Street is concerned, there are a number of issues that have come up. We have, uh, of, in, in, in some cases, fifteen, twenty kids in their early teens going up and down the, the street, going completely across the street. I've had, I've had callers say to me, "I cannot believe I almost hit uh, one of these, uh, early teen, uh, bikers." Uh, and, and obviously, w- w- we want it as safe as possible. Kids didn't care. They're just going up and down. And as the, uh, speaker, uh, just said, uh, you know, the middle lane, the people are using that to pass, which obviously that's not the purpose. It, it's to, uh, make turns. So I think that, you know, money is an issue. We've talked about this before. We talked about the timing, uh, situation and, uh, and it would cost, uh, a tremendous amount of money. But you know, uh, a number of people have said to me, "For heaven's sakes, paint does not cost much money. Let's get some crosswalks." I see people trying to cross this street. I live on Andover Street myself. They can't cross. It's terrible. And nobody is, nobody stops. And that's a shame because somebody is gonna get hurt. And then all of a sudden, when someone gets hurt, then everybody jumps up and they get, they get things done. So I think we have to look at this and we have to make some changes. We've got, um, us, we've got a street here that is a very dangerous street and yet we only have one walkway. One walkway and that's Douglas Road. And we fought for that. We fought for the light. As, as the city manager knows, that, that took almost eight months before we ended up getting that, that, uh, that up. And then some people actually say it's, it's actually, it's, it's, uh, a rather, it can be dangerous having that light up there because the kids press the button, they see the blinkers and then they immediately stop. They immediately start going across the street. The drivers do not stop. So again, I think we have to revisit this and at least let's get some crosswalks over there to make things safer, slow it down so that people will say, "Hey, you know, we have an opportunity to cross the street." People cannot cross that street right now. So I thank you very much, uh, for your time and I certainly hope, uh, that we can, well, uh, looking forward to the report and hopefully we can make some change. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Madam Manager?
Yeah, just, um, briefly, um, we have talked about this. There was a more extensive report done before. I, I think the Councilor Conway is correct that that was, uh, uh, an expensive, uh, fix, but nonetheless, you know, there's, uh, are the short-term, uh, things that we can also look at. In the spirit of full disclosure, I too live on Andover Street, so I'm familiar with, you know, the challenges out there. Um, and, uh, I do know that, um, Christine Clancy, Natasha Devance and thing were out there today. Um, they worked on the more full report, uh, about a year ago and they were out there. I, I, I'm sure we're gonna have a more, uh, updated report coming to the council to, uh, see what other suggestions we can, we can deal with. So as I said, they were out there walking today. I hope they didn't cross the street, but I know they were out there on end.
I think they would have had a problem crossing.
Yeah, you would have seen them.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Um, just one quick comment. Uh, you know, again, Madam Manager, this is, uh, I'm gonna again push for my speed humps, you know? The speed bumps are what, what we call the speed humps, the wider ones or raised crosswalk. You know, thi- this is an issue where we've gotta start trying. And, uh, I know that they say that, uh, sometimes they're I don't know if a nuisance to the fire department uh, would be the correct word, but, um, you know, we've gotta do, we've gotta try something. We did push for more crosswalks. We couldn't get them done. Um, but at least the speed humps can slow the traffic down. Um, we've gotta try something, so. Appreciate your time on that. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Um, any announcements tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Madam, um, uh, Councilor Mercia?
Thank you. Um, now tomorrow night, the police chief will be holding a public, uh, meeting at the senior center from four to six. Does, uh, the manager wanna talk a little bit about that? I think it's important.
Sure. Um, thank you, Counselor. So tomorrow night, uh, the, the, uh, mayor, the uh, superintendent, myself, members of, of the council, I believe some members of the state delegation as well as Congresswoman, uh, Tryhan, plan to be present socially distanced at the senior center. Uh, and the point of the, uh, session is to hear from the public. It's entitled Lowell Listen. It's entitled Lowell Listens. It's a listening session where we can hear from members of, uh, the public, namely people from the city of Lowell who want to speak about issues concerning, uh, racism, concerning their experiences here, uh, in the city. Um, and, and it is, uh, intended that we understand and hear from people what they are experiencing so that we, as a community, can then take the information, uh, and then move forward on next steps. This, uh, the intent is to, uh, come up with a working group and solutions to some of the issues that we expect to hear. But, but most, most importantly, we want to hear from people. It was, um, because of the, uh, situation that we have, namely, we can only have so many people in the gathering. Uh, this is going to be at the Senior Center. People have been asked to register in advance on the website to speak. They will come in, uh, this is all going to be televised on LTC live and will be repeated so, uh, people can watch at home and hear the speakers. Uh, they will come in in a group of one or two, uh, so that we are observing the social distance requirements. Masks will also be, uh, uh, used, uh, so that we can, we can hear from, from the public. And so it will begin at four, uh, go to six is, is the plan. Uh, and if it turns out that, uh, there are more people who want to be heard than, than have registered or whatever, we can do this again, but this is, the idea is to have a, a, a long-term commitment to work together on issues, uh, that the community feels are important. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Any further announcements? I just wanted to make one announcement. Um, just wanted to remind us all, I know we've talked about this before, but you want to remind us that, uh, Henry Marsham, Director of Cultural Affairs and Special Events, um, did announce his retirement. He's a not, he's retiring this week. Um, so we want to wish him all the best. Uh, Henry's been a great asset. He started here in 2010, um, 2014. He became the Special Events Coordinator and subsequently the Director of Case since 2017. So, um, we, as we know, uh, Mr. Marsham is the city magician. Um, and we just want to wish him and his family all the best in his retirement. And, uh, want to say thank you for your years of service. Need a motion to re, to adjourn by Counselor Chow, seconded by Counselor Roy. Thank you.
Great job, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, everyone.